I'd like to call the City Council meeting for Monday, May 19th, 2025, to order. I also would like to turn on my recorder. We're gonna get good at this. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the appointment of the Mayor Pro Tem. Do we have a motion to appoint Alderwoman Swanson, who is the longest sitting Alderman?
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Cobb's.
Yes, I guess.
Close.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alderman O'Brien. And we'll do a roll call vote. Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb's?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. It's all yours.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a prayer from Reverend Dr. Montell Crawford from the Morningstar Baptist Church.
Friends, if you could bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we come and we thank you for the privilege of leadership. We thank you for the grace that you give us to do so. We ask for your continued wisdom and guidance and strength as we go about serving you by serving your people. Ask a special blessing upon our fire and police, that you would watch over them and keep them safe from hurt, harm, and danger. Ask for a special anointing upon every one of our older persons, that they would serve with honesty and integrity, and that compassion would be made known by their service in this city. How grateful we are to have such committed servants serve this city the way in which they do. And I ask for your continued provision, guidance, and strength. Send your name and for your sake we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The next item will be the pledge led by the City Council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comments, and we do not have any public comments for tonight. So the next item will be roll call.
Jones?
Present.
Noble?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Cobb's?
Here.
Here.
Navarez?
Here.
Marzak?
Present.
Swanson?
Here.
Tally?
Here.
Osinga?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Malone Marshall? Prude?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
We do have a quorum. Department hats?
Kidwell?
Here.
LaRoche?
Here.
Rogers? Kubel? Landweir?
If the thought would be to allow hydroponics, which changes the code, to allow it, where we have none at the moment. Then do the broader discussion over longer time for the rest. Louis asks if this should be going to code for input because code would be needed for the change. Byrne was talking about the municipal code in regards to the ordinances. Marzak stated each one would come through city council for approval, so it would be an interesting pilot program. Mullen Marshall asked, this is the only allowed on city property, correct? Yes. Noble questioned containers being added to the community. She was asking because she was not at the last meeting. There was no new business, no need for executive session, there was no other any question concerns, and motion to made by Mullen Marshall, seconded by Noble at 5:43 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10C.
Budget for Monday, April 14th, 2025.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. The budget committee met on Monday, April 14th, and the highlights of the meeting included Comptroller Rogers reviewing the March 2025 financial statements. Those were included 11 months into the last fiscal year. Comptroller Rogers noted, among other items, the cable television tax generated far much, far less than budgeted, likely due to many people no longer subscribing to cable television. Overall, revenues are on track and expenses are significantly below budget, so we anticipate a surplus at the end of the fiscal year. Comptroller Rogers also noted that cash balances have returned to a normal level now that all of the funds for the pension obligation bond proceeds have been invested. Committee members also discussed the current fiscal year, at that point, the future upcoming budget, the new fiscal year, and discussed, among other items, cannabis revenue trends as well as health insurance, which the increase came in for approximately 8.5%, which, while high, seems to be below many other local communities. Workers' comp insurance is also slightly lower this year for the renewal, Comptroller Rogers reported. And finally, we discussed the status of the ARPA funds and how that process is concluding. And the committee adjourned at 5:57 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is 10D.
Community development for Monday, May 5th, 2025.
Alderman Baron.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The Community Development Committee met two weeks ago tonight on May 5th. We started by hearing a departmental report from Ms. Brewer Watson. We went over the individual, we got a list of the individual addresses where ECDA is engaged in active construction projects as of the time the report was made. Eleven were ongoing in the first ward, four in the second ward, three in the third ward, three in the fourth ward, seven in the fifth ward, eight in the sixth ward, and eight in the seventh ward. ECDA wants to do more, but they've been stimulated by limited numbers of available contractors and shortage of building materials. ECDA, as this council knows, we rejected an initial bid to use community development block grant funds, that's CDBG funds, to assist with repairs of city fire stations, numbers four and six. We're going out to rebid those projects, expecting that we're going to get, if we get more than one bidder, we'll get a much better deal on those. Most receipts, all receipts for the 2425 CDBG public service program are due. Still waiting on a few of the recipients to get those, their receipts to us so we can reimburse them from the allocated funds. As you know, the community advisory board is now meeting, and they're able to help us make recommendations as to the CDBG program for 24, 25, 26. However, until a federal budget is passed, we don't know what the amount available will be for that. And actually, Ms. Brewer Watson gave a little bit more detail, but based upon the initial proposal that was put out by the White House, the CDBG program would be cut entirely. That would be funds that, for many years, the City of Kankakee has used for the public service programs, those we've been able to fund Eastside Football, a number of different NAACP programs, We Stand for Christ Jesus Ministries, Catholic Charities. In addition to that, CDBG funds have been used for emergency housing repair, single-family rehabs, public facilities like the fire station roofs that we have, as well as demolition throughout our wards. In addition, the skinny proposal for the budget at the time did say that there would not be any new allocations of healthy homes funds or lead hazard abatement grants until the unobligated funds were depleted. Ms., she also stated that many staff members, I think it was four or five staff members within the ECDA department, their salaries are paid either in whole or in part from CDGB funds, and those would be dramatically impaired, the ability to continue staffing at that level. Ms. Brewer Watson and Ms. Califfitt provided an overview of the services available to persons experiencing homelessness in Kankakee County, discussed the efforts of the continuum of care, as well as the homelessness task force, on some of the gaps that exist between emergency housing, rapid rehousing, transitional housing, permanent housing, and the other areas that we are seeing a need. In response to a question from Alderman Osinga, Alena Califfitt, who is the CDBG program manager, said that the Veterans Housing Project on Washington Avenue was not yet full, but it was accepting applications. Alderman Osinga also asked if any other municipal stakeholder was participating in the homelessness task force or in the continuum of care. Other than Mantino Police Chief Alan Swinford, who is a member of both, no other municipality in the county is participating in any of those efforts, despite invitations and updates being sent to mayors on a regular basis. Ms. Watson said the task force is compiling data that does show that there are homeless students in areas of the county outside the City of Kankakee. I expressed that it was incredibly frustrating to hear that other municipalities are ignoring those invitations. Ms. Califfitt reported that for, in terms of emergency shelters, Fortitude was operating its Night Ford bus, but they're taking a break for the summer. Harbor House offers domestic abuse victim shelter, but that has varying availability. Gift of God, it seems, has not, is not currently offering services due to difficulties in retaining volunteers to operate on a regular basis. ECDA was having conversations with Fortitude at this point about their location that they've purchased at Evergreen and Court, but a timeline hadn't been set as to what would be brought before the council for discussions and decisions on that. And with that, we adjourned at 6:43.
Thank you. Next item, 10E.
Public safety for Tuesday, May 6th, 2025.
Alderman Osinga.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety Committee met on Tuesday, May the 6th, at 5:30 PM. There were no public comments. We reviewed the April minutes, and those were approved by committee members. We had no old business and no new business, so we went right into the monthly activity reports. The police side chief Kidwell was present for the police. The department is currently staffed with 65 officers and we're budgeted for 67. There are two new, two more new officers attending the police academy, and a hiring list is exhausted, but new ones being prepared. In April, 15 weapons were recovered off the street in Kankakee, nine by Kankakee officers and six by KMEG officers. We now have approximately 200 brachotic cameras and eight flock cameras, and those are the license plate reading cameras. And we reviewed the bills for April 2025. It totaled $119,113.77. Some of the larger bills were almost $4,700 for three new computers for squad cars, $12,000 for new flock cameras. Cancom large bill was $62,935, and $11,104 for maintaining and installing the new equipment in the squad cars. There was a motion and a second made, and the bills were approved by unanimous vote. Kankakee officers were busy last month, they always are. They responded to 7,331 calls for service in the month of April. There were 117 adult arrests and three juvenile arrests. Officers made 342 traffic stops and wrote 496 tickets. Officers handled 78 traffic accidents and conducted 85 patrol, walk-through patrols. And what I find very interesting, every month, officers responded to 196 domestic-related calls in April. Chief Kidwell discussed the numerous crime issues in each individual ward and answered questions that all the persons have. In our report, there's a breakdown of every crime in each ward, and if anybody, all the persons have questions, he attempts to answer those. On fireside, Chief LaRoche was present for the fire department. The fire department is currently staffed at 47 sworn personnel, and they're budgeted for 51. The bills for April 2025 totaled $122,568.97. Some of the larger bills were $33,888 for Cancom, $10,692 for EMS billing, $31,162 for apparatus maintenance, and $4,452 for fuel costs. After reviewing the bills, a motion and a second was made, and the bills were approved. The fire department was busy also, as they always are. The fire department responded to 662 calls for the month of April. 383 were medical calls. There were two structured fires in April with a total dollar loss of approximately $8,000. The fire department did respond to 12 mutual aid calls outside the city to assist other fire departments. Thus far, in 2025, there have been 13 fires with a total loss of $172,000. Chief LaRoche reviewed and discussed the fire prevention and training programs conducted by fire personnel throughout the month. There was no need for an executive session, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:10 PM.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 11, report of officers.
We have the city of Kankakee bills in the amount of $692,685.99.
And can we get a motion for the report of officers for 5/19/25 in the amount of
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to approve the report of officers, place the money in the proper accounts, and pay the bills in the amount of $692,685.99.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Navarez. Any questions or concerns with the bills? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye, but I abstain on check number 83983 for $4,065 payable to Homestar Insurance Services. Thank you.
Baron.
I abstain as to check 83986 to Joe's Automotive, 83988 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 840053923, and 1489 to Piggish Engineering, and 1490 to Kinky Valley Construction Company to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Prude.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays.
The bills are paid. Item 11B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $766,237.77.
Is there a motion to approve the Environmental Service Utility Bills in the amount of $766,237.77?
So moved, Mayor.
Got a motion from Alderman Osinga, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
I abstain as to check 36403 to Gordon Electric Supply, 36409 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 3925 to Piggish Engineering, and 3926 to PSI Construction to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Prude.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have none tonight. 13 new business.
We have an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee. Handicap parking signs established at 615 North Dearborn Avenue.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules that would interfere with the passage of this ordinance?
So moved.
I have a motion by Alderman Prude, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Noble. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. Item 14, motions and resolutions.
Item A, we have a supplemental resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for the 2024 motor fuel tax program.
Neil, do you have anything?
Yeah, this is just a resolution to finalize the program from last year to kind of address some of the change orders and changes in the field that we had to make, so this is authorizing the closeout of that program.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Alderwoman Lewis, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderwoman Johnson. Any questions? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Staying to avoid a potential conflict.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Motion carried. Item 14B.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of an addendum to a purchase of one Pierce enforcer pumper truck for the Kinky Fire Department between Pierce Manufacturing and the City of Kankakee in the amount of $28,766.21, and there is a correction by Chief LaRoche, it is not a pumper truck, it's an aerial truck, so.
Chief LaRoche, could you address this issue, please?
Yes, thank you. Back in 2023, in September, the city agreed to purchase a aerial truck from McQueen and Pierce. We went to contract with them. Since that time, we, our aerial has gone out of service. The delivery time for the new aerial was going to be 44 months. When we signed the contract, we prepaid for the vehicle with a discount for prepay of Since our aerial has gone out of service, our current one, Pierce and McQueen are working with us to get our aerial that we ordered earlier than 44 months. As a matter of fact, it's going to take about 10 months off that timeframe, so we're looking somewhere right about 36 months or so to deliver, which will bring it to September of, October of '26, which with the bringing of the aerial 10 months sooner, the discount that we received for paying for the vehicle early diminished. So it was a $251,000 discount when we purchased it with a 44-month delay. Since the delay has been reduced by 10 months, that discount needs to be reduced by $28,000, which, since we are prepaid for the vehicle, we're going to have to owe additional $28,000 on delivery. This agreement is just an addendum to our contract stating that we're agreeing to receive the vehicle 10 months sooner for an additional cost.
Are there any questions for the chief?
I'd just like to say that, you know, we spent a lot of money with that company. We're spending a couple million bucks on a new truck, and, you know, the reason we put a lot of money into the other vehicle was to satisfy our needs until we get the new truck. And I think it's pretty pathetic that the company can't even, you know, give a little bit, but yet they can, they can make it happen for another additional $28,000, you know? And I believe the problem should have been found with, you know, the other truck before we put money in it. This is not against the fire department, but the situation in a whole, but that's the situation we're in.
Okay, do we have a motion to pass this resolution with the correction of being an aerial truck as opposed to a pumper?
So moved.
I have a motion by Alderman Osinga, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is passed. Item 14C.
Resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation.
Zach, can you talk about this, maybe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you speak.
Mr. Lopez.
Yeah, so this is the agreement we signed with the state Illinois Department of Transportation. They give us money yearly, quarterly, to maintain certain state roads, so this is what this is about, the agreement that we get, we get with them. Fair, Indiana, River, Court Street, Brookmont, that, those streets there, 115, so this is the agreement that we get. It's a 10-year agreement.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lopez? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Who said that? Alderman Marzak made the motion to approve the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Cobb. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. Item 14B.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of an addendum to a purchase of one Pierce enforcer pumper truck for the Kinky Fire Department between Pierce Manufacturing and the City of Kankakee in the amount of $28,766.21, and there is a correction by Chief LaRoche, it is not a pumper truck, it's an aerial truck, so.
Chief LaRoche, could you address this issue, please?
Yes, thank you. Back in 2023, in September, the city agreed to purchase a aerial truck from McQueen and Pierce. We went to contract with them. Since that time, we, our aerial has gone out of service. The delivery time for the new aerial was going to be 44 months. When we signed the contract, we prepaid for the vehicle with a discount for prepay of $251,000. Since our aerial has gone out of service, our current one, Pierce and McQueen are working with us to get our aerial that we ordered earlier than 44 months. As a matter of fact, it's going to take about 10 months off that timeframe, so we're looking somewhere right about 36 months or so to deliver, which will bring it to September of, October of '26, which with the, with the bringing of the aerial 10 months sooner, the discount that we received for paying for the vehicle early diminished. So it was a $251,000 discount when we purchased it with a 44-month delay. Since the delay has been reduced by 10 months, that discount needs to be reduced by $28,000, which, since we are prepaid for the vehicle, we're going to have to owe additional $28,000 on delivery. This agreement is just an addendum to our contract stating that we're agreeing to receive the vehicle 10 months sooner for an additional cost.
Are there any questions for the chief?
I'd just like to say that, you know, we spent a lot of money with that company. We're spending a couple million bucks on a new truck, and, you know, the reason we put a lot of money into the other vehicle was to satisfy our needs until we get the new truck. And I think it's pretty pathetic that the company can't even, you know, give a little bit, but yet they can, they can make it happen for another additional $28,000, you know? And I believe the problem should have been found with, you know, the other truck before we put money in it. This is not against the fire department, but the situation in a whole, but that's the situation we're in.
Okay, do we have a motion to pass this resolution with the correction of being an aerial truck as opposed to a pumper?
So moved.
I have a motion by Alderman Osinga, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is passed. Item 14C.
Resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation.
Zach, can you talk about this, maybe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you speak.
Or Lopez.
Mr. Lopez. Yeah, so this is the agreement we signed with the state Illinois Department of Transportation. They give us money yearly, quarterly, to maintain certain state roads, so this is what this is about, the agreement that we get, we get with them. Fair, Indiana, River, Court Street, Brookmont, that, those streets there, 115, so this is the agreement that we get. It's a 10-year agreement.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lopez? Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Who said that? Alderman Marzak made the motion to approve the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Cobb. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hobbs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is passed. Item 14B.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of an addendum to a purchase of one Pierce enforcer pumper truck for the Kinky Fire Department between Pierce Manufacturing and the City of Kankakee in the amount of $28,766.21, and there is a correction by Chief LaRoche, it is not a pumper truck, it's an aerial truck, so.
Chief LaRoche, could you address this issue, please?
Yes, thank you. Back in 2023, in September, the city agreed to purchase a aerial truck from McQueen and Pierce. We went to contract with them.